I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, friends, you have an amended agenda in front of you. I think there's only one change which would be on the consent agenda, item C-17-16, it would be the approval of the appointment of Katie, or excuse me, that's not correct.
It's the 21.
Twenty-one, I'm sorry. It would be C-17-21, the approval of the appointment of Catherine Phelps to the Historic District Commission. I met with her earlier today and think she'll be an outstanding individual to serve in that capacity. So that is the one change to the agenda. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Members present, we have myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Girbaw, CEO McClellan, Mitchell, Tahar, and Dillon from city staff. We have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, Police Chief Rennick, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, City Superintendent Engineer Ruble. We have two members of our legal team with us this evening. We appreciate you both being here. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you please sign in the back, I would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'd like to add a couple items under discussion. Wastewater treatment plant, code enforcement.
Are those two separate items?
Yes.
Okay, noting those two additions, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Girbaw, seconded by Dillon. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to presentations because we have no absences to excuse. And first up is the Celine Youth Council, Melinda McCade.
Hello.
How are you? Thank you for being here. The floor is yours if you'd like to come up to the podium.
So I'm Melinda.
My name's Anna.
And I'm the co-chair of Celine Youth Council, and Anna.
I'm a member of Celine Youth Council.
So we're just here to talk about what we've been doing as a council, what we're looking to do going forward, just kind of give you guys an update. Mrs. McClellan is actually like our board member advisor. It's lots of fun. So, most recently, in terms of this year, so we currently have thirteen official members and twelve liaisons, which is more than we've ever had as a council. We've almost doubled our membership from last year, which is really exciting, and we're just looking to grow in the future. We also have people joining progressively throughout the year as the word gets out. One way that we did get the word out is through our Celine Youth Council Parks and Rec Teen Forum, which we held in November, in which we had about sixty teens from the community attend in addition to our twenty-five or so official and nonofficial members of Celine Youth Council. And we just brainstormed and discussed different ideas for what teens are looking for in the community in terms of Parks and Rec and like different programs we would like, what times would work best for us. And we've actually seen some of those ideas implemented at the rec center in terms of a ping pong table that was widely requested and that has been purchased and is in use. So that's very exciting. And then volunteer hours.
Yeah, so basically, what we wanted to establish within our group is not a deadline for volunteer hours, but we all wanted to make sure that we were putting in like work into our community and getting involved. So each of us agreed to get a certain amount of hours. And we, our advisor Jody, gives us different opportunities throughout the community and we all sign up and try to go as often as possible.
Mm-hmm. I know our next big event that a lot of us will be attending is the Winter Fest on the 28th. And as a council, up until this point, we've had a few hundred volunteer hours combined amongst us, which we think is really cool. And then, what else do we have? Yes, at the holiday parade in the beginning of December, we were again honored to carry the banner at the front of the parade, which has been kind of Celine Youth Council tradition. So that was very cool. And it wasn't too cold, I don't think, which was a good thing. And we had to work around the median, but we figured it out. And then, we are also currently accepting nominations for the Celine Youth Council's section of the Celine Salutes Awards. So we do have our own Celine Youth of the Year Award. So until February 17th, I believe, we are accepting nominations. And I have some nomination forms with me that I can get to you guys. And so if you guys know of any like high school-aged outstanding youth, feel free to nominate them and we will select one. Anybody else? All right, that is all from us.
Very good, ladies. Well, we appreciate your enthusiasm and leadership. Are there any questions from council members? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. Next up on the presentation portion of the agenda is the quarterly police department report. Chief Rennick.
Well, thank you. Hopefully, everybody has a copy of this, so I'll just go over it very, very briefly. As you can see, all 155 policies have been completed, read. They have not all been issued yet, but through chapter seven, which is 109 policies, have been issued, read, and acknowledged by every employee in the police department. And as soon as we are completed with all of the policies being issued, the daily training bulletins will start. As a matter of fact, they mailed me the first packet, and I have those, and those are being reviewed just before the next one will come out. Communication continues within the police department. We certainly do our roll call meetings every day, shift meetings, and we also will have regular staff meetings on a monthly basis. The department audits continue. We did two more audits, which was for the ammunition of the police department and our aerosol weapons that were completed this quarter, and those are filed with the clerk's office. Training for the department, as you can see, the policy and procedure takes up a significant amount of our time. Twenty-one hours per employee, so we're looking at 400 hours just in policy and procedure review this quarter. Sergeant Andy Hartwick, I think I did mention this last time, but it officially happened during this quarter. Graduated from the School of Police Staff and Command. Sergeant Mag is in the Celine Leadership Institute. And several officers attended a legal update class last quarter as well. And we continue to use the Police One online training, so every month, each and every one of our officers do receive training and as well as our dispatchers. A little bit of an additional, Police Dispatch, as you hopefully walked by, is about 97 percent done. They just put in the glass last week, and a couple of more little minor things to do inside, and dispatch should be done. Matter of fact, a couple of people this last week, a couple of our dispatchers, very, very pleased as louder people came into the entrance, were able to slide that glass. And it was great for quietness when they needed to be able to talk on the radio and talk on the phone. Special events that we attended, Christmas tree lighting, the US-12 completion ribbon cutting, and the Christmas parade. And yes, as they said, the youth council, it was a beautiful night for the Christmas parade. I don't think you could ask for better weather than we got this year. Police Department employees participated in a shop with a hero through the Myers Corporation and Family Christmas program. And once again, your police department is very busy with over 16,000 different types of activities, including calls for service, traffic enforcement, and safety checks. That would be businesses, residential, parks, vacation checks, et cetera. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this.
Thank you, Chief Rennick. Are there questions for our police chief? Ms. Dillon?
Okay, I have a few. I'll just kind of go through. On policy and procedure, can you just clarify, the 109 policies that have been acknowledged, are those by certain chapters or are they kind of all? I guess I'm just trying to figure out. I'm not sure about your, the way you've got it worded here. It says, "All employees have acknowledged their understanding of these policies." Which policies are you referring to, chapters four, five, six, and seven, or the 109? Is the 109, four, five, six, and seven?
109 is the total amount of policies that have been issued. That's chapter one through seven.
Seven, okay. And what is your timeframe for releasing the rest of the policies?
They're all released and they're due by January 31st. So the end of this month, the entire policy manual will be out and read.
Okay, so they'll acknowledge them by the end of this month?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, where it says 21 hours employee time, is that time they're spending during the workday or is that home, like off-duty time that they review them?
No, that's on-duty time that they spend reading the policies.
Okay. And then, the daily training bulletins, when do you anticipate them starting those?
I'm hoping to have those in February. They come out in a packet of all thirty at once. And those are mailed to me, and I'd go through those. And then, once I'm satisfied that they make sure that they take care of all of the policies that have been revised. Because some of the policies had to be revised because we're a smaller agency, and so some of those provisions in the Lexapro policies do not fit. And so when they send them out, they send them out on the draft policy. So I have to make sure that when the daily training bulletins come out, that they match our policies. Then they're all given to the officers at once, and they have the entire month in which to complete those. In this case, 28 of them for next month.
Those are the online ones that they did?
Those are the online ones, yes.
So have we been paying for a service for a year that we haven't used for those? Or have we not started that service yet?
That's included in the policy manual services. So it's a part of it.
On a separate fee?
No, it's all included, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, communication, I know you're saying that you're still having meetings. It seems like there's still some communication issues. Have you guys looked at changing any of the way you're doing things? Or I'm just trying to figure out about that, and I'll just leave it at that. And then the audits, I wanted to ask, how many audits do you have to do?
Have to, or?
Or how many, what is your plan for audits?
Okay, we would probably end up with maybe 20 to 25 different audits that we will have done. Without having that number in front of me, I would guess that, and maybe Ms. Royal could help me, maybe we've done maybe 12, 15 of them, somewhere in that area to this point.
Okay.
Not all of those are required. Some of them are just audits that it's a way of just making sure that everything's in its place.
Right. And so then, is there going to be a timeframe, like will those have to be repeated? Are they a monthly audit, a yearly audit, a five-year audit?
Depending on what is audited, yes. Some of those are going to be annual. As an example, the evidence room is an annual audit, but it's also a periodic audit. Couple of times a year, just pop into the evidence room with the evidence officer and say, "Show me these three things that are supposed to be on the shelf" to make sure that they're there.
Okay. And then, the last one is training. Do we have staff shortages because of all the trainings?
No.
Or we're not paying overtime to accommodate for people being off of trainings?
No, fortunately, the new schedule allows for us to have one person off at any one given time for training. But most of this that is before you is on-duty stuff as well. It's not something where it takes them away from the building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dillon. Additional questions? Mr. Girbaw?
Yeah, just a couple things on the audit aspect. When you mentioned, you know, validate, who actually does the validation and so forth in assuring separation of duties and counts? I mean, are you doing the review of your subordinate? Or is someone from the other side of the office coming in and assisting with you while those counts are being done?
All the audits that have been done have been internal audits. And what I do is the person who is in charge of that, I have them do the audit, and then I check the audit over. As an example, the evidence room was a huge audit, and there were actually three people involved with that. And then, when they were done, an audit report was finalized, sent to me. I reviewed it, made sure it was correct, and then I gave a copy to Ms. Royal to be filed in the clerk's office.
So we haven't had, where Plant Moran might come in and actually validate it for us as a separate verification?
Not normally. Certainly, there would be an expense to that, and at this point, there's no expense to these audits.
Right, except verifying that separation of duties usually involves someone outside of the organization helping to assist.
It certainly, you certainly can do it with an outside agency, but there would be a cost.
Yeah, but, and that's the reason why we have our auditors, so I just want to clarify on that. The other question, I would actually like to see more information on the 16,324. That's a number, but it really doesn't clarify us on these quarterly reports, especially if this is something that we present to the public. It says you were very busy, but we don't know exactly what the heaviest activities are. And looking at some of the calls, and then was looking at the December report, which everyone has received through Todd's, or Mr. Campbell's, monthly communication, weekly communication, seems to be a lot of activity in the park and so forth. Can you expound on that a little bit, what's been happening in the, that we require to have a lot of officers, I guess, hours at the parks?
Well, I guess, first of all, the 16,324 is broken down into the monthly report, and this is just a compilation of that. I mean, I certainly could do the same thing on a quarterly report, if that's, I mean, if that's what you'd like. I just did this as a summary, but certainly I could do that. As far as the park activity, if you're looking at the number of park checks, is that what you're looking at there in front of you?
Yeah, I think something was here in terms of, it seemed significantly higher than it had been. Yeah, park checks, 437 versus 178 a year ago.
Yes, we had had a couple of complaints of some people after hours in the parks, and so we stepped up some enforcement and made the officers check the parks several times throughout the night to make sure that people were not in our parks. And so every time they go into a park, they put it down as a park check, and that's probably why that number is higher.
And I think the other aspect was looking at, oh, residential and business checks, I think, are up significantly from past years. Is that just because we've had more requests from individuals asking to have their homes checked? Or is it a different process that we're doing?
No, that's actually a different, that's just some, one of the officers going through the neighborhood or going through the business complex. It's not a person who's on vacation. And they're required to do residential checks and business checks if they're not doing other things. And so if it's a little bit slower, they may very well have more residential and business checks.
Okay. I think that's it for me right now, as I know we'll have an annual review coming up as a result of Mr. Hess taking his exception, and we'll be looking at that later on, so I'll have more questions at that point.
Okay.
Additional questions? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dillon, I was just curious if you could maybe elaborate on the communication concern?
On the communication? Well, okay, we're getting officers that are still complaining that they're not being effectively... Okay. Do you really want to go through this at this point? That there's issues with the officers saying that the information is not being disseminated to them? That it's not flowing either way?
I'm not attempting to be argumentative, I was...
No, I'm just saying, I just wanted to...
I'm concerned with that.
No, I just, my comment was that we sort of get the same kind of language with each quarterly report. And I just wanted to know if that style had changed. I know there had been some concerns that maybe a different method would be used.
Yeah, I mean, again, the chief's department, and they have, he has stepped up and changed and increased the communication since as a result of the initial report by Mr. Hess. So, but certainly, if those are concerns, those need to be brought to our attention so we can try and better look into them, evaluate them, and try and resolve them if we can.
Additional comments or questions?
Let me just, Chief, as it relates to increased patrols and increasing the police presence in our parks, I'm thinking of one park specifically, which you and I have discussed. And I want to commend you and your officers for being responsive to the concerns that have been articulated and expressed by a number of our citizens. And I would also state for the public record that if individuals are utilizing our parks after hours for indecent and illegal behavior, please know that we are increasing the patrols. You probably will be caught, and you should take that behavior and whatever you're doing and go elsewhere because it's not acceptable and it will not be tolerated. And again, I think that the fact that you are increasing patrols is indicative of how responsive the department is to the community's needs. So I just want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else for the police chief, thank you, Chief Rennick.
Thank you.
We'll proceed then to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Thank you very much. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-18, request to fly French flags at the Four Corners. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 10th, 2017 memo from Sylvain?
Sylvain?
Sylvain.
Sylvain, mayor, excuse me, and to approve or not to approve the request to fly French flags at the Four Corners from February 11th through February 25th, 2017.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, councilmember Seo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. And I believe we have someone here related to this?
Yes.
We appreciate your time this evening, and we would welcome and love a comment.
Be open.
Hi, I'm Katie Malatello.
And I'm Kyle Mayer.
And we just wanted to let go over some of the details of it. So we're sophomores at Celine High School, and we're participating in the French exchange.
There are 11 students coming from Blois, France. They will be hosted by students at the high school.
And so we were just wondering if the flags would be put up like the day before or sometimes before February 11th and take it down after February 25th, maybe February 26th or something like that?
We're requesting for the city's permission to do this.
It would mean a lot to the French, you know, to have the flags up. It'll welcome them and make it feel like we're all coming down there to introduce them to America.
Yeah, is this okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, excellent. Why don't you stay put in the event that there are any questions from my colleagues? Are there any questions for our guests? No? Mr. Tahar, please.
Not a question, but a comment. I'm very much in favor of this. And Mr. Seo, I think will concur that last fall, when we had a group of students from Germany visiting Celine High School, the German flag was flown at the Four Corners, and they noticed, and they really liked it. So it's a great thing to do. It's very welcoming.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for your efforts. Appreciate that. Mr. Girbaw?
Just curious, how do you coordinate with the city in France or the group of students?
Well, the students that have, that we're hosting, we email them or text them or use social media to connect with them. And the teachers, they connect through the other teacher that's in France.
Oh, cool. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. Any subsequent discussion on this motion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Seo, seconded by McClellan to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The next motion will be a motion, actually, it's a new business item 17-19, excuse me, and this is request to set a public hearing. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 18th, 2017 memo from Clerk Royal and to set or not to set a public hearing for the Celine City Council meeting of February 6, 2017 to consider CH Celine LLC's application for a resort economic development liquor license for the proposed Imagine Theater location at 1335 East Michigan Avenue.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Is there a second to acknowledge receipt?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon.
Do you care to make any comments? Pretty straightforward.
No, I don't know anything.
What questions do we have?
If I can start. I'm just asking for additional information on where similar type of situations have been set up. If we could have further examples in the state of Michigan, if there's other movie theaters anywhere that have the similar type of setup? Or if there's, because this is new to the city and because it's unique, because it's considered a resort license, I'd just like to make sure that we're not doing another precedent and just trying to understand what it actually is.
Well, this is going through the Michigan liquor control, and they would have to approve it, and then we would allow it to go. We don't, we can't really say, at least as far as I know, they've, the Michigan liquor control has taken over most of the liquor license approval. And I haven't actually checked on any of the other entertainment places, but because this is now considered an economic redevelopment district, that's why they're able to ask for this liquor license.
So is it not required to have any kind of approval by the city? It just requires us to have a...
Yes, they would still have to have our approval. They still have to pay the $500 application fee, and they will still have the background checks. It's just that this is something that has to go through per hour ordinance.
Okay.
But I have not checked any previous or any other states.
Well, Clerk Royal, why don't you do this? Why don't you make contact between now and the 6th of February with a representative at Imagine Theaters? My suspicion is that they have used this vehicle, this mechanism, to acquire a liquor license at probably many of their other facilities.
Okay.
But why don't we confirm that?
Yeah, just because, since we're having a public hearing, I'd like to have the information that we can have available. It seems, I know you have information that indicates you're going to have more details, but I think that would be beneficial for us to understand where other communities have done this.
And if you have any specific questions, if you'll email me those questions, I will ask.
Okay. No, that's pretty much the one. I just want to know where examples are, where it's happened, and potentially what other restrictions other communities have placed on it.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
I just wanted to sort of piggyback on what Mr. Girbaw just said, is that I did look on the state of Michigan site, and there's very limited information about it. But it does appear that it's geared towards economic development with a focus on hotels. So I guess I was trying to see if they're just trying to use the economic development avenue because they don't really seem as though they fit the other, you know, the other, excuse me, from where we're sitting. Yes, the other license types. So yeah, I would be kind of curious about that. And is there any issue? Have they expressed any issue if they do not get a liquor license? Or what would happen? Do they have any?
They haven't spoken anything to me. I don't know anything.
Okay, but like Mr. Girbaw said, I think that it'd be really nice that before the public hearing, we had information from them as well as the state about it.
Personally, I'm not aware that any of their facilities, I believe all of their facilities have a liquor, you know, they have acquired a liquor license. They have full bars. I think that's a key component to their particular business model. And as the CEO said when he first appeared before city council, they, it's a very controlled environment. I think they've had one violation in the nearly 20 years that they've been in business, offering adult beverages to their patrons. So again, we can confirm that. But my suspicion is that my opinion is correct.
I'm not sure what Janet, I'm sorry, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
What is your question? What do you want me to find out?
I would like to know if they're currently utilizing any resort liquor licenses at any of their other locations.
Okay.
And how, if this, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman, but if they were not to receive a liquor license in Celine, how would that affect their business?
Okay, correct. I will find that information out, and I will email it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Girbaw?
And just the other reason that, yes, we may have a hotel opening up in town, this may be a, there may be a secondary request, so I want to make sure that, how we're handling it.
Any other questions or comments? Well, first, we have a motion to acknowledge receipt from, moved by Girbaw, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion to set the public hearing for February 6?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Girbaw, seconded by Seo. Is there any discussion? Seeing none or hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is set for February 6. We move on to new business item 17-20. This is MERS. 457 Supplemental Retirement Program Resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 19th, 2017 memo from Treasurer Bennett to approve and adopt or not to approve the MERS 457 Supplemental Retirement Program Resolution.
Move to acknowledge and approve and adopt.
Thank you. Mr. Seo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Treasurer Bennett, do you hear? Okay. She doesn't have, the treasurer doesn't have any comments, but she's happy to address any questions and concerns that you may have. Mr. Girbaw?
Will this, by allowing this, will this allow both current and former employees to be able to make switches among the different funds?
I believe it will only be for current employees that they can switch their funds from the existing 457 to another 457 so that all of their healthcare retirement is under one umbrella with MERS instead of having to go to Nationwide or ICMA and MERS for their defined contributions.
Okay. So this is just health, health plan savings, or is this...
No, this is not healthcare. This is a normal 457. This is just a deferred comp that would be completely the employee's contribution. Part of the defined contribution, which we have in place for all of our new hires, because even the staff personnel are a hybrid, which is a defined contribution and a benefit, defined benefit mix. But they're required to put in a percentage and either get, you know, their own contribution towards their retirement. In the past, we've provided Nationwide and ICMA for that. And MERS, because they have the, you know, they have their piece of it, was explaining to Todd and I that they have, they now have this 457 plan so that when the employee goes to retire, they don't have to go out to Nationwide or ICMA. If we put this 457 plan in place, it would be the employee's option to either keep it with those other or they could have it under MERS so that they didn't have two people to contact when they do retire. So it's for an ease, basically, of the retirement benefits.
Which is fine, and that's what I understood. I just wanted to make sure whether it sounded like when you said health savings, that there was another component to it.
Nothing, no, I was only explaining that there, that the health savings is part of the packages that MERS is providing for employees.
And then the only other question, it says bi-weekly contributions. Is that because most of our employees are bi-weekly?
All of our employees are paid bi-weekly.
Are they? Okay.
Yes.
I was thinking we had monthly.
Nope, bi-weekly.
And then the other thing, the Roth deferral contributions, does that impact anything in terms of our overall liability? It doesn't transfer money outside of the plan. It just keeps it within it, but it's... It just keeps it within it, but it's as a, it's just their personal contribution.
It's their personal contributions. It has nothing to do with ours.
Okay, got it.
Okay?
Additional questions? Mr. CEO.
By way of full disclosure, it didn't occur to me until Mr. Gearba asked the question. If retirees are allowed to switch to this fund, that would impact me. So, perhaps I should withdraw my motion?
I...
As a potential conflict of interest?
I accept that withdrawal, Mr. CEO. And the clerk will note that he will be abstaining from the vote on new business item 17-20. Is, would somebody else like to move the motion? Tahr seconded it. Gearba will second the motion or move the motion. Thank you for that, Mr. CEO. Ms. Dylan, did you have a question?
I do, just a really quick one. First, is there any cost to the city to do this?
None at all.
There's no cost. And what about administration of it? Is it totally on the employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please.
Ms. Bennett, have you had a chance to speak with employees? Have you had feedback?
Absolutely. This was actually brought up when we were meeting with our Teamsters employees and reviewing the MERS defined contribution. And we have had a large number of new hires in our Department of Public Works over the last couple of years that are enrolled in the defined contribution. So, we had MERS out to kind of educate them and they were asking about, is there any way, it was actually the employee's request, was there any way we could put it back into MERS so that they wouldn't have to deal with two? And that's when MERS pulled Todd and I aside and said that this was a benefit that we could consider and it would be no additional cost. So, I think the Teamsters employees are welcoming this addition.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Gearba.
As we've moved to contribution by employees, where it used to be 100%, now it's, you know, whatever the difference is, how is that used in actually calculating our overall liability for the pension?
You're going to have to give me a little bit more. Are we talking defined benefit employees that was 100% contributed or are we talking defined contribution employees?
I think both because how did we move? My question is, we've now done this where individuals are contributing 3% or 5%.
That's for defined benefit.
Defined benefits.
Mm-hmm.
So, those that are, I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out.
Welcome to my world.
But this is the question where I'm trying to figure out, we have that defined benefit and then we have the individuals that have the, and I guess that would be the one that I'm looking at is if, are any of the defined benefit ones that are receiving a fixed pension or whatever based on it without some of our long-term employees, the ones that have not been hired after the date where we changed the plans?
Okay.
They're now contributing a portion to their retirements, correct?
Correct.
How does MERS use that component in addition to what we contribute as calculating the overall pension benefit that goes to the employee?
Their contribution of, I think, it's across the board right now, all defined benefits is contributing the 3%. That define, that 3% is taken off immediately from the monthly premium that the city pays. That's a direct cost that goes directly into their benefit that is reduced for the city's liability.
So, we were actually seeing a reduction in the amount of our liability, which is attributed to their specifically owning that portion. It's different.
Yes.
I'm looking at, because usually when that happens, it's considered part of the overall being that's a defined benefit. I didn't know how.
Yeah, no, it directly, in fact, when we, each time we change that, I have to get a new actuarial from MERS that adjusts our savings because it is a direct cost savings to the city.
Okay.
And it directly goes to that employer. So, I'm actually just putting, I myself am putting in that 3% directly towards my pension.
Right.
And it's recorded monthly when I submit payroll.
But it's being, but the real liability by the city is being reduced by that amount.
Absolutely.
So, that's the piece.
It's a nice savings to see.
Yeah, in other situations, it's usually the whole thing's combined and given as part of it. So, I didn't know they segregated it out.
Nope, it's done by each individual because each defined benefit has different groups and each group, each time we change that, I have to go and get a new actuarial and it directs, directly impacts that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Now that we know what we're talking about.
Yep, yep. I hope I didn't confuse you. I just wanted to make sure that going forward, we don't have a...
Additional questions? Ms. Bennett, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, that's been moved by Gearba, seconded by Tahr to acknowledge and to approve and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. One abstention from Councilman CEO. We move on to the discussion portion of the agenda. Commission, committee and task force reports from council members. Ms. Tahr.
Yes, thank you. I have two. The Environmental Commission met last week and first meeting of the year, so there was a certain amount of vision and discussion about plans for the entire year. But one piece of information that I want to start talking, mentioning now, I'll mention it again, is the next e-waste recycling event is scheduled for April 29. And it is hoped that this will be at no cost to, it will be open to residents of Celine. It's hoped that it will be at no cost to people coming to recycle things. There's work being done to find a sponsor. You may recall when these started five or six years ago, the companies that accepted the e-waste actually paid for it. But recycling is completely market-driven and the ability to sell materials to be recycled has decreased somewhat in the last six years. So, the companies that collect the e-waste are no longer paying the city, well, the funds went to the Fifth Corner and those in, at that time. So, there's no revenue that comes back toward the city from the event, but the Environmental Commission is hoping to find a sponsor so that there will be no cost. And then, of course, in addition, S has become traditional, there will be the opportunity for people who bring e-waste to be recycled to make a donation to the Fifth Corner. And some sort of tree will also be given out to folks. And then the second is the Arts and Culture Committee also met last week and is currently working on a project that we're calling Art Around Celine. You'll be hearing more about that. And we're working at this point on the possibility of making a joint project with the Celine Main Street design team. That's not finalized yet.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prottemp Tahr. Additional committee, commissioner, task force reports. Ms. McLaurin.
Yep, I just wanted to thank Ms. McCabe and Anna, right, for coming tonight and giving a report on what's going on with you as council. And then Parks Commission met last Tuesday and we were working on setting goals for the year and talking about what to do around in the parks. So, it's exciting stuff.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. CEO.
ZBA met in an abbreviated meeting and about all we did was select officers for the year and set the agenda, or set the calendar and we adjourned. Short and sweet.
Ms. Mitchell.
I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of Winterfest this weekend. I have bought a number of buttons for my family and these buttons will continue to benefit not only Main Street by their initial purchase, but by area businesses giving discounts. So, there's a good website resource. So, these are available downtown at various locations and also at the area chamber office and Main Street. So, enjoy.
Very good. Any other commission, committee or task force reports? I just have one. There's a letter in front of you dated December 16th from a Mr., excuse me, a doctor, John Debling. He's a resident of our community. He's a gentleman that actually I reached out to proactively about a month and a half ago and Mr. Campbell joined me for that meeting. We discussed some of his concerns and objections to tax abatements. Mr. Campbell can correct me if I'm wrong. I thought we had a delightful meeting. We had to respectfully disagree on occasion, but it was a good productive meeting and I think he appreciated both of us taking time out of our schedules to hear his concerns. He subsequently sent me this letter thanking me for my time and also providing some suggestions on how we could improve the abatement process. I told him that I would share it with you and so I'm fulfilling that promise. And I'm also going to be sharing it with the members of the Special Projects Commission. And I hope that sometime later this year, we'll have a discussion. I think we have a good abatement policy, but there's certainly ways in which we can improve it. And so, I offer these, I offer these to you tonight for your consideration. If you have thoughts and ideas in the future, please don't hesitate to contact me. Okay? Any other commission, committee or task force reports? How about reports or other announcements? Ms. Har.
I happen to notice today at Bush's, the posters are, have gone, have started to go up, at least for the Empty Bowls Project. That's a Celine High School activity and it's going to be held this year on Thursday, February 9th from 5:30 to 7:30. Cost is $14 per person or $45 for a family. Food is provided by the school's culinary arts department and all of the proceeds go to food gathers. So, it's a great event and a good cause.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Har. Other reports or announcements? Ms. McLaurin.
Yeah, I just wanted to report the Main Street design team is going to be working on the student art banner contest again coming up shortly. So, keep an eye out for flyers coming home to students K through 12 on that. The theme is yet to be determined, but that contest should be coming up shortly.
Any other reports or announcements? Then we will proceed to the third discussion item, which is the Building Department. As everyone on council will recall, but for the audience's benefit, we had a work meeting at the end of December to consider some changes to our Building and Engineering Department. We received proposals from Carlisle Wortman, York Charter Township, Pittsfield Charter Township and Washtenaw County. I don't believe I'm forgetting anybody there. There's four. Is that correct? To provide us with building inspecting services and/or code enforcement services. And of course, there's the fifth option, which is to sort of maintain the status quo and provide those services in-house. I indicated at that time that I was looking for consensus this evening. So, in the interim, I hope that if council members did have questions, concerns, or if they requested additional information, that they directed those requests through the city manager's office. But again, at this time, this is an important public policy matter. I am looking for consensus on how to proceed. So, I would like to hear from each of you this evening. And I already ticked her off that I was going to be starting with her. So, what I'd like to do is start with Mayor Prottemp Tahr, work my way down to Mr. CEO, and then I'll come back to the left side of the dais and begin with Mr. Gearba, ending with Councilwoman Mitchell. So, with that, Mr. Har, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you. I, in going over subsequent to the work meeting, all of the material that we were given plus my somewhat sketchy notes, there is a lot of information that we received. And I don't have a firm idea of the best way to accomplish this, but what I, from my own point of view, I think what we need to work for is the best customer service that we can, that we can provide. And for me, in thinking about what we heard about and just thinking, trying to think from a customer point of view, I think we need to have a solution that is responsive and quickly responsive, both to homeowners and developers. I think we need access to a good core of highly qualified inspectors to carry out all of the, all of the responsibilities. And the solution also needs to be cost-effective. And I don't know what the best way is to do that because this is, this is a picture that is a huge amount of moving parts. My impression, but it's only impression, is that a hybrid model might be a good solution. And I'm basing that in part on the fact that at this meeting, though we heard from four different agencies, it was very clear. They all knew each other very well already know, and the documentation from Pittsfield Township, who couldn't send a, that couldn't send a representative, also indicated already a high level of cooperation and familiarity with other, others, other units' operations. So, it seems to me that building on that already good foundation of cooperation is the way to go. So, that's, that's where I am.
Okay. Ms. Dylan, thank you. Mayor Prottemp Tahr.
Well, Mr. Har definitely summed up, I think, what most of us think, which is that there was a lot of information and that right now, we're at a point where we're extremely busy in the Building Department. And so, we are going to have to look at customer service and whether that customer is the individual homeowner versus contractors because there is definitely a difference there. I'm still digesting the information as to what would be the best for us, but I think cost is definitely a major factor. And, you know, to give people what we think they want as far as window service may not actually be what they want. They may prefer to drive further for extended hours. I can't say that for sure, but I think that we definitely need to do some more vetting of the topic and possibly have another work meeting on the issue and really make sure that we are all on the same page.
Thank you, Ms. Dylan. Mr. CEO.
I totally agree with the points made by Ms. Tahr. I have a brother who's in the construction industry, has been involved in the industry for probably about 40 years. And as we all have our own complaints about the kinds of work we do, the one that's most often voiced by him are his associations with various building departments across the state of Michigan and into Ohio. Certainly not to cast aspersions on any of those who gave presentations, but I think for the sake of providing customer service, I think we can achieve the best quality control by retaining the service in-house. I think we can offset the costs through the fees that we charge for various inspections and so on. And I think that the model that Mr. Rubel had developed just before Mr. Taylor had departed with strong control over a person who's our own in-house inspector, combined with other services from other people in different trades, is the best way to go.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Mr. Gearba.
As I stated my concerns, I think over the last few years and actually probably the last five or six, we've managed to subsidize the Building Department to basically the detriment of the city. Significant money has gone into keeping the department when some of the activities and such had basically just evaporated. And as we started to get more busy, there is an understanding that we need to have the ability to be able to respond as quickly as we can to developers and so forth. From my perspective, we also need to look forward in terms of how much growth that we may anticipate and how much other activity we're going to have. I've looked at and agreed that a hybrid approach probably will be the approach that I would go with, but I really look forward to something that's connected with the county because they have staff, they have aspects of which they're well-informed, they're trained with the information, they have the records, they will take on liability. There are a lot of aspects of which we, as a small community, cannot do any longer and we need to be looking at where we can cut costs and achieve it. Where I am concerned is that I think we need something that handles the aspect of addressing the homeowner, the individual that still wants to do the work on their home and so forth. From my own perspective, in the last month or so, having had some work and things done, the process was not the best. I was a little concerned as having to have certain hours outside of a normal schedule that was required to be able to have an inspector come and look at something. So, I think that we have ways of improving our situation that would help the city and help other aspects. But I think the other piece of it is really understanding the planning, making sure the enforcement and aspects are handled. And so, looking at an organization that's a bit larger, that most of our contractors currently work with in terms of all their other developments and a lot of our, even just services have to work outside of this community of Celine, they're familiar with the county. That piece connected with maybe a Carlisle Wortman in terms of planning, which they already have been doing and significantly handling, would be good. been doing and significantly handling, would be good. The other piece I'm concerned about is that section that's specific to Celine and how to have the best representative for it to handle that. Similar, not at level of maybe what Gary is currently, but something that's in between there that would handle the whole department so that we have our own best ability and best ideas under our own handle, so that we know what, as a community, we want to be able to do. But where I am concerned now is that we need to get this moving. We haven't had a code enforcement, we haven't had a building inspector now. We've known about this for three months. We need to get this somehow figured out within the next month or so. So at this point, this is one of my concerns, that we need priorities and this is one of our priorities that we need to resolve.
Ms. McClellan.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the statements that have already been made, but I guess I'm most comfortable with further discussion on it, but in a timely manner. I agree with Dean that I think it needs to be done sooner rather than later. I also think that the county hybrid approach is attractive to me just because of the multiple resources that they have, but I would like to see some kind of, if we can arrange for some kind of office hours here in Celine, for people to be able to access those services here in Celine, if that's doable. I don't know, but what they offered seemed attractive to me and then the cost savings also was attractive with their option. And then I agree again, you know, I think it's essential that we have good customer service for our residents. I do think that something that the county didn't offer was the local code enforcement officer, so if we can hybrid that approach, I think that that is a potential way to go, but I still think it needs more discussion, more thought put to it.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Mitchell.
When I think about this choice, I think about our strategic meetings that we have had over the past few weeks and the phrase "world-class service" has been uttered a few times. And I think in that interest, the best option we could have would be in-house. I would like an in-house code enforcement officer. A hybrid model is my second choice, but I also think in terms of our core values as a city, I think it's important to have people that live here and are employed here and grow here. And we have a really fantastic city staff and I would like to see that tradition continue. And I'd like to have our building process stay in-house as much as possible and I'd like to move forward. Let's go.
Well, thank you all. Let me just share a few thoughts and then I'll articulate what I believe to be the best path forward. First, it must be acknowledged that historically, this city's building and engineering department has had an outstanding reputation and that's a testament to the people who have been employed in that department throughout the last several decades, including our city engineer superintendent, Mr. Rubel. I also want to acknowledge our recently retired building inspector Tillman Taylor, who was with us. Gary, you can help me with this. Here about 15 years.
Right.
Who served the city of Celine with great distinction for 15 years, was firm but fair, and I can tell you a lot of people enjoyed working with him. And so we regret that he retired, but we wish him well and more importantly, we thank him for his service. I'll also note that everyone who's been employed with the city of Celine as a code enforcement officer has, in my opinion, done an above-average job and served this community quite well. As we look to the future, well, actually, before I go there, let me first of all thank the representatives from Washtenaw County who are in the audience this evening. I also want to thank Mr. Toth from York Charter Township, Doug Luwan and his colleagues from Carlisle-Wartman, as well as the staff at Pittsfield Charter Township. I regret that they were unable to send a person to be with us a month ago when we discussed these issues, but I appreciate them submitting a proposal. After careful review and consideration, my preference was to engage further with Carlisle-Wartman. We already, well, we have a longstanding relationship with that organization. I believe they've done an outstanding job providing us with planning services for the past several decades. I think they have a competent and seasoned staff and would be more than capable of providing building inspecting as well as code enforcement. So my preference coming into tonight's meeting was to have staff engage with them to craft a one-year contract. I would be looking for a review after six months with the potential of giving them greater responsibility if they received a satisfactory review. It's apparent, based on my initial head count, that that is not the prevailing consensus this evening. And I'm going to try and summarize here, my friends, and if I summarize incorrectly, I hope that you'll interrupt me and correct me, but Mayor Pro Temp Taha, you favor a hybrid model. Ms. Dillon, you are interested in getting some more information and vetting this information further.
Yes, to create a hybrid, yes.
Okay. Mr. Seo, you are in favor of providing in-house service, similar to what we've done in the past. Mr. Gierba, you would prefer the county, but it also sounds like you would prefer some additional dialogue as well.
Some type, I'm favoring a hybrid-type approach.
Okay. That position seems to be shared by Councilwoman McClellan, but you would also like some more discussion?
Yeah, more discussion and I think a hybrid, I just like the idea of the county and then a hybrid with some kind of local person.
And Mitchell, your position mirrors that of Mr. Seo, which is to provide the service in-house. So we do not have a consensus this evening, although it appears that it's close to unanimous that we engage further on this issue. So what I would like to propose, because I agree with many of the sentiments that were shared earlier this evening, this is a time-sensitive issue and we need to get this resolved sooner as opposed to later. Now, we need to be very thorough and strategic in our thinking, but it needs to be resolved. So what I would like to do, unless there are objections, is I would like to change the work meeting start time on February 6th from 6:00 to, or from 6:30 to 6:00, probably take a half hour, 45 minutes to discuss the building and engineering department and then to transition to OPEB and health insurance costs. And what I would suggest in the interim is if there are specific pieces of information that you're looking for, additional analysis, please email that or call the city manager. I was even in this week, ideally in the next couple of days. We need to get that to him. And then I guess I would ask this question. Is it the consensus of council to invite the entities that presented a month ago? Would you like to invite them back again or is that not necessary? Again, that would be a, please.
I mean, one of my concerns is we haven't seen a full, the other piece I'd like to see is a full budget of comparables of all three opportunities. We kind of know what the budget is, but we don't really know if we're going to have significant savings by going one way.
Okay.
Because, you know, then we have to consider the opportunity costs of if you want kept full in-house versus whatever else. So I think we need to have that. We've seen contracts and so forth, but we've not seen a full picture of what each scenario is going to cost.
Do you want like an Excel spreadsheet that compares the costs?
Correct.
Okay. That can be done. Let me start, stick with you, Mr. Gierba. Would you like city staff to extend an invitation to our guests to come on the 6th?
Um.
At a minimum, we'll tell them that it's happening.
From a minimum, I think there's really only two guests that I think we'd have to invite, which would be Carlisle-Wartman and the county.
Okay, okay.
But I'm speaking out of place for the rest of council.
I want everyone's opinion on this, so.
No, I agree with that, I think, and I would like to entertain the idea that if the county is willing or can or is able to entertain the idea that they may have office hours here, you know, a small amount, so.
Carlisle-Wartman and county.
Okay. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Carlisle-Wartman and the county, and I agree with Mr. Gierba. One of the problems in trying to, or one of the challenges, let's say, in trying to absorb this information and make comparisons and judgment is that it's presented in such different form.
Sure.
And being able to have some sort of summary overview of all of them so that you can see how the scenarios would play out under different organizations would be very helpful.
Very good. Ms. Dillon.
I concur.
Okay. Mr. Seo.
My only hesitation is that if, in fact, we do a spreadsheet that compares all four and one of the ones who we're not contemplating at this point comes in considerably lower in price, are we being short-sighted by not having some representation from each of the four entities?
Well, that's an excellent point, Mr. Seo. Why don't we do this? Obviously, based on the head count that I took just moments ago, there's far more interest in, at least at this juncture, in the county and/or Carlisle-Wartman, but I'll make sure that staff notifies all four entities that were having this meeting and that they're welcome to attend if they would be so inclined. Again, if you have additional, if you would like additional information, please email that to the city manager, ideally before the end of the week. The only other thing that I wanted to add in my remarks, and I know this is shared by many of my colleagues at the dais this evening, I am very, I'm keenly interested in the cost and seeing if we can generate some cost savings, but in saying that, what is more important, at least to me, is providing an exceptional service to our residents. And so that is first and foremost, that is paramount, at least in my way of thinking. So again, we're going to be discussing this at 6:00 PM on the 6th. I suspect we will have to fit a lot of discussion into that hour and a half work meeting because I think there's a lot to go over related to OPEB and healthcare costs. So what is likely to happen, unless there are objections, is I will add this issue as a discussion item on the 6th. If council members need more time to digest, that is perfectly all right because our following council meeting is just a week later. But at the very latest, I want to come to some conclusion by the 13th. Will you join me in making that commitment this evening?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, if there's nothing further on the building and engineering department, we will reconsider this issue on the 6th. We have two final discussion items this evening. Both were added by Mr. Gierba. The first is the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, could we just have an update on that? Because I know Mr. Skoll had mentioned that they were going to do some type of treatment or whatever and I didn't know if, you might know, Mr. Campbell?
I know we've talked with a couple, we've talked to another local engineering firm, but their essential result is, I mean, they provided some comment, but they didn't think it would be cost-effective for them to walk around and, I mean, they've done the, I mean, walk-around type of thing to get a better idea for themselves, but they didn't provide anything further. And then I will have to double-check with Mr. Skoll on the item that he mentioned at the last council member, or council meeting, I'm sorry. I'm not sure of the status on that.
Okay. I just, this is going to be something I think will be on discussion every meeting going forward, so I'm going to keep on top of this, but that was one of the things that was commented because I'm not sure, we did smell once or twice this week, but I'm not sure how frequent we've been having complaints again, so.
Yeah, well, if I can add to that, that we, you may recall, and we did, we have put it out multiple ways for the, because part of the odor study involves or includes some odor complaint reporting, so I know we have had at least one or two folks that contacted the folks for the study and the folks from Tetra Tech for, that are partnering with Webster on that, so. So that is going forward.
Thank you.
I would ask that because the city manager needs to follow up with us regarding the wastewater treatment plant odors, that this be added again as a discussion item for the, for our next council meeting on the 6th.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gierba, do you want to move on to code enforcement?
Yeah, the only thing, my concern is with code enforcement. I know we don't have anyone in place. Are we doing any code enforcement at this point?
I picked up two signs on Saturday.
Good, okay. Well, the reason, thank you for doing that, but the reason why I mention is that there are quite a few banners and vertical banners and things that are hopping up over, and this has been, you know, a pep issue of mine, but there's stuff uptown that I'm seeing on city property that's sitting there and probably should be removed. I know after the construction, we've mentioned that we were going to start enforcing more of what we had in place and I just was wondering when that's going to happen. It's just this issue of, I know we don't have someone in place, but we do have other individuals within the city that could keep an eye out for those type of things.
Certainly, and we are doing that.
Okay. That's where I wanted to see how we're standing then.
If I may piggyback on that, I think Mr. Gierba's sentiment, and I hope my colleagues on council are cognizant of this, as well as the members of the audience or those who may be watching this meeting at home, code enforcement is vitally important and it has a direct impact bearing on the quality of life and, more importantly, the look and aesthetic within this community. And I know that in the past, and I've perhaps made this mistake myself, we've looked at code enforcement through the lens of dollars and cents, but more than dollars and cents, again, it directly relates to the quality of life in our community. We often think about the cost of doing something, but there's a cost of not doing something. So again, as we continue to consider the building and engineering department, I hope there's broad consensus to maintain code enforcement and moving forward when we have the financial resources to do so, to reestablish that position as a 40-hour-a-week job, which is really what it should be in the Celine community. I'll get off my soapbox now, just wanted to say that. If there's nothing further under discussion, we come now to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question a city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there any citizen comments? Mr. Olson, please.
John Olson, Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. I just want to mention after the lady spoke earlier about the Celine Salutes, that we are still looking for nominations for people that will close on February 17th. There are two military awards, a current as well as a veteran award. There's a first responder award and then, of course, we had our Citizen of the Year and Lifetime Achievement. So if you can, you can call us, go on our website, the description of what the details are that encompass each individual thing are there and please get those nominations in. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Any additional citizen comments? Any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? Please note our upcoming meetings, one on the 6th and one on the 13th, and we changed the start time of the work meeting on the 6th to 6:00 PM to accommodate not only OPEB and healthcare, but also the building and engineering department. Again, there are no absences to excuse, so the chair would, at this time, entertain a motion to convene into closed session for the consideration of material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. City council will not reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session.
So moved.
Moved to convene, Mr. Seo?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Seo?
Yes.
Councilmember D. F. Dillon? Yes. Councilmember Gierba?
Yes.
Councilmember McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Taha?
Yes.
And Mayor Marlowe?
Yes. We are convened into closed session then at 8:30, 6:00 PM.